Okay, I'd like to call the order of the December meeting at the White Lake Board of Trustees. At six forty-six. We're good. All right. So that's the call to order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Best year. Yeah.
Next year. All right. So let's have our road call.
Please President Jennifer Schultz.
Here.
Pleasure of Wayne Newton.
Here.
And trustees Becky Knapp.
Here.
Eric Shotwell.
Here.
William Lonsberry.
Brogo.
And myself, Carrie Francis Peck. Director April Stevenson and Assistant Director Amy Rosen are also in attendance.
Thank you. Can I get someone to approve the agenda?
I approve.
I'll say it. Gwen.
Oh, you guys are fast.
Start typing. All right. We don't have any public. They all last.
You want to take building.
We have no.
Or if you want to do it.
And now I would need someone to approve the minutes. We have just one set of minutes.
Yes. The minutes as written.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gwen. All in favor?
I.
All right.
All right. My report would consist of wishing everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I have a vice president. So that brings us to you, Gwen. Oh, okay. Well, for the new people here, so Bill can, is it Bill or William?
Well, I'll go by William.
Okay, sure, William. We're going to go through the first page in the government fund balance sheet. And hopefully people looked at it before our meeting today. I do, if you, I am going to present a motion today, Jen.
Okay.
So. All right. So this first page is just our balance sheet. We'll receive this every month. It shows the first column is year-to-date for the end of November, and the second column is last year, and then the difference is the third column. Our next page is our investment summary, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk about. We had a, in our October meeting, we approved a hundred thousand dollar CD. We approved two CDs. One was a CD at Flagstar, and that one was completed. And it, is it, is it? Yes, it's, it's reported here. It's the fourth line of Flagstar. We did a nine-month because that was the best rate that we could get. And I, in our, in our minutes said we could do six to twelve months, so we did a nine-month, which is four point three five. And so that will, that will expire next September. We also had a Genesis one that was expiring. And. And thankfully, our really nice accountant actually updated the sheet today. Okay, so that was really, that was great. Actually, though, it's not the right amount. This Genesis one, the last Genesis one for it, I'm sorry.
The orange one or different?
This isn't, this isn't right. We have a hundred thousand dollar one, the one that says it didn't get updated on the sheet. So the very first Genesis one says eleven-five to two thousand twenty-three to twelve-six. That one expired. I opened a new CD on Monday and per our board minutes from October. Well, in our board minutes, we opened this for a hundred thousand dollars, and we said we would take the interest and put it into Flagstar. So I have that interest checked, but this, this original CD wasn't a hundred thousand dollars. It was a hundred and eight thousand dollars. So that meant eight thousand dollars per our, per our minutes, eight thousand dollars ended up in the savings account. Okay, so I realized that when I'm sitting there, I couldn't ask for that money. So I'm going to make a motion today to ask for eight thousand dollars to be moved from our savings account at Genesis, which has, makes no interest, to our Flagstar checking account, which is three and a half.
Sure.
Okay, so that's going to be my motion for the day.
Are you making it now or?
I'll make it in just a minute because I'm going to make two motions. I just wanted to give you some background to that so everybody understood what was going on. And as I was sitting there, so at the credit union, I realized there wasn't anything I could do except bring it back to the board. The next one's our prepaid expenses, our aging summary. We don't really have anything that's over ninety-one days. The T-Mobile, that's just a credit that's sixty-one to ninety-eight days. And then if anybody has anything else on the general fund, you know, we're getting towards the end of the year. And if no one has any questions, I'm going to make a motion to accept the bills for payment as business.
I will second.
Okay, if there's no questions on that, the P and L. All right, and my second motion. Yeah, maybe you don't, sorry. All in favor?
I.
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 I guess so. And I, okay, and then I make a motion to move eight thousand dollars from the Genesis savings account to the Flagstar checking account. All in favor?
I.
Now, that's the bulk of my report, and April, I said that we actually have some money coming in.
Yes, for next year's taxes.
Yes, they've already come in. The, the other thing I wanted to say is we are going to meet, the finance, the signers are going to meet with Flagstar. Did you see the note?
I saw the note.
It's Tuesday. Okay, it's Tuesday, the seventh at ten thirty. And the other thing that they wanted to let us know is that the branch in White Lake on Highland is closing in March.
Oh.
It's to be done, right? Which I know is very convenient for us.
It is.
Yeah, but they just don't have enough. The, we use the Flagstar branch at, what we like in nineteen fifty-nine, and it is closing as of, I think, the middle of March. It doesn't have much traffic.
Yeah, there's never anybody there.
Right, so, so we, we have three other options, but they're just not as convenient. So that's my report.
All right. That was ten thirty on the seventh.
Yes.
I would say.
No, they'll be here.
They'll be here.
Yes.
I'll send a calendar invite.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gwen. Now we're at the director's report.
Thank you. Okay, so we completed and submitted the DSLRT survey. This is the Detroit Suburban Librarians Roundtable, a collection of libraries that get together about every two months. We discuss issues that are going on in libraries, but one of this, one of the most important things we do is share statistics so that we can be of help to board members and making decisions in that regard and for comparison purposes. So as soon as that is released, it's given to you each year, and it's always available in the administration office if you don't want to keep a calendar.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, it's very, it's very beneficial.
Lot of wealth of information. Okay, we partnered again with the Highland White Lakes Business Association for their annual Red Box Collection Drive. Board News and Networking, Becky attended the tree lighting, this farm tree lighting ceremony for us, so thank you. Strikulation Services is busy, of course, getting books. They help get books ready to go into the book sale, getting rid of some older magazines, and getting books ready for Dublin Center. If you are unaware, we do keep books at the Dublin Center for our seniors over there. Communications are looking pretty good, actually. Our constant contact is, was doing pretty well with their open rate. And one thing I did want to show you is we're doing a redesign of the monthly e-newsletter. This goes with how we're really trying to amp up our brand and how it looks as in regard to. You're going to see the geometrics of the building as well as colors. So like babies through fifth grade have kind of a yellow-blue, teens have kind of a peachy-orange. This is all in our color family, and adults have kind of a teal-ish, and then all ages family is our, our normal blue. And so you'll see that in here. I'm going to pass that around, so we're just trying to change the way our layout is and freshen things up. And so I will pass that around.
Thank you.
So we're quite excited about that. When you come into our building, you'll see that on the placards that you'll see that same angular look to it. And so, yeah, very exciting, all from the, the, what we had from our marketing and from our design. So that was looking good. I had my normal director connections for me, of course, committee meetings, friends meeting, Library of Michigan Directors Meeting, my cohort Crisis Media Training and TLM. Facilities, we had to deal with some boiler issues this month. We found that there was condensation in the lines on boiler number two that were plugged. This caused it not to be able to drain off any residual water. Technician came, cleaned the line, and that was taken care of. A second problem was the pressure valve on the water line itself was out of adjustment, which caused the line to drop in pressure. He was not sure, Goyette was not sure as to why this had done this, and other than maybe it had something to do with the construction next door, we're not sure. It's, the boiler's just been acting up. So he came in, they adjusted the valves and took care of the problem. Third problem, the pumps for the boilers themselves were running backwards. It's been that kind of month. He said this usually occurs when there are powder, power outage, but we really didn't have a power outage, so that was a little odd. But between Goyette and Johnson Controls, they got everything back and running and in the right direction. Finally, the touchscreen monitor on one of the boilers was not accessible, so they were able to get that working again. So when we left, all was good. Lovely. Friends, twenty twenty-five Friends Executive Board is now complete with the addition of trustee Joe Tobias, so we welcomed him at the last meeting. They will start their new official board next month. December's book sale provided just over forty-eight hundred dollars in revenue. They gained several new members and welcome new helpers. This is the first, the first book sale of the new year in twenty twenty-five will be held in March and does include a bake sale. Don't want to miss that. And maybe we can get Eric to bring his cookies. The Friends are going to sponsor a puppet show for kids on Saturday, April fifth, free of charge, and will be handling registration with that, and they are planning an evening dinner in August with a hypnotist. So just like they had the mystery dinner theater, this time it will be a hypnotist, so exciting stuff for the fiftieth. And again, they looked at our wish list slash contribution list, and they liked what they saw, and so that you have that tonight to look at and to approve. And I do have a couple tweaks to it I need to talk about tonight, but otherwise they got that, they liked that. We received some books from a local author and some for unfortunately in memory of a local author, and as well as that Jane Retros, Retro, I never say that right. Okay, let's try this again. The Jane Retrosen Agency sent us another fiction book from one of their authors. Adult Services, a big thank you to Amy for attending the Friday First Coffee for the HBBA at the Commerce Library. Staff here are, we are celebrating Holiday Spirit Week for the last few weeks. They, Amy, Stephanie, and Network graciously planned a bunch of different things for staff to get involved in and show their holiday spirit. Faith has been accepted into graduate school and will start her Masters in Library and Information Science in January, so congratulations to her.
Congratulations.
We do have another staff member who's also in that process, so I will probably announce that next month. Well, White Lake Police Foundation has helped us again with our Teen Wellness Cart as well as the Huron Valley Community Coalition. They both continue to help us with our Teen Wellness Cart. Let's see, what else here? Emily attended the Fisk Farm Tree Lighting for us to assist the Friends and pass out toys and candy. And we had a local Daisy troop visit the library, and we provided them a tour and showed them all about the library landscaping. We worked with the township. Just wanted to thank Anthony Noble for helping us with the sprinkler system. We'll still be double-checking on that in the spring if we need their assistance. They have been more than helpful, so a big shout out to them. We updated some closing procedures under safety and security. There have been no staff anniversaries in December, and Electromatic was out to repair the digital sign, so we are back.
Yay.
This is fair. That was just a shock and thank.
Yeah, that happened quicker than.
It happened way quicker than we thought. They told us it was a back order, and yeah. Basically, I called to get the appointment, and they, they will get back to you, and the next day it was done.
Wonderful.
Okay, so yep, again, it takes teamwork to make the dream work, and just a big shout out to staff. This was taken by Annette on our staff one night when we had that beautiful sunset.
I didn't get a copy of that, so.
Okay, were there any questions on statistics? We're a little down. I'm not surprised because we were still finishing up construction last month a little bit. And it was the holiday.
Interesting that hoopla use was up though. However, all the success, the only one that actually increases for some reason, and that's record.
I wanted to just travel over the Thanksgiving hours.
That was what I wanted to.
While you were looking at that, I'm going to go ahead and pass around the, just some other information. We got a nice thank you card from the Highland Library for hosting their staff. We have some new staff photos, but you can take a look at those. Our final set of donations to the Oakland County Animal Shelter. And the beginning, my beginning draft of what I would like to take of the local businesses to encourage sponsorships. So that's a draft of something I'm working on.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to committee reports. You've got the Finance Committee reporting up first. So in our meeting on the eleventh, we just discussed what the proceedings are and what we're going to do going forward. Well, it's CD. Moves in February.
We, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, yes, and I forgot to include that in what I'm doing today, so bear with me just one moment because for Williams' knowledge, we usually vote on CD, what we're going to do with each CD that's maturing two months in advance so that we don't get stuck with the possibility that we don't have forum and we can't make a decision on a, on a CD. So we have a Flagstar scene that's coming, wait a minute, which one's going to be due?
The Chase.
Yeah. We have a Lake Michigan coming due in February, and we always have the Chase one that's coming. No, all we have is the, oh, the only one that we have coming due is the Lake Michigan one. Right? It's coming due in February twenty twenty-five. Because Chase one, we just wrote, that's. So. I didn't look at the rate. So I don't know what to say. I mean, I can, I can make a motion on this when we're ready to make mo, make a motion now that it will do between six and thirteen months. And I think that we should just renew this one. Because we'll have a lot of taxes in at that time, right?
We just got seventy-five thousand last week in tax money.
Okay, and we'll get most of it in January and February.
Yeah.
All right, so, and I apologize that I didn't, I wasn't ready for this CD, and we did, we did discuss it. So, and we discussed it.
Busy time here.
Yes. Yes, yes. Basically, so. Here, I'm going to make an, a motion.
Okay.
And I'm going to make a motion that we renew for two hundred thousand dollars, the Lake Michigan CD in February for between, for six to thirteen months, depending on interest rate. And the interest from the current, the maturing CD will be cut in a check to go to Flagstar.
Is it where?
It'll, it'll, we'll have cut, checked to Flag, to the Flagstar check.
Okay, Gwendolyn Newton made a motion to renew four two hundred thousand dollars of the Lake Michigan CD in February for six to thirteen months, depending on interest rate. An interest from the current CD will be cut in a check to go to Flagstar checking.
Right.
Since six to thirteen.
Six to thirteen. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Gary.
Do you have a question?
All in favor?
Yes.
Hold on.
Just moving forward is a general comment, and then I have a question. I'm really about to special, so especially me kind of catch up, learn. So if we just skip over it, I'm, I'm really not going to learn.
Sure.
Really be happy the next time we meet, and I got to ask questions if you could have done it the other time, so, okay. Did, can you read the motion first, and then I want to ask the question?
Sure. Gwendolyn Newton made a motion to renew the Lake Michigan CD in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars in February for six to thirteen months, depending on interest rate. An interest from the current CD will be cut in a check to go to Flagstar Bank, banking, checking, excuse me.
Okay, right, we're good.
Okay.
I just want that clarification, and I, I thought I had a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Now we need to vote. Oh, well, I voted once. You. I got.
We didn't have a vote.
Okay, so had Gwen made the motion, Eric seconded it, and all in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so Finance Committee talked about the CDs, and in January, we'll talk about the one that comes up in March. And then we talked about the investment policy, and we have a draft ready for the investment policy. And it's based on a, our investment policy is based on what the state of Michigan, like the library, Michigan Library Association recommends, and the law, and a couple examples. And I, we also pulled an example out of the investment policy for accounting. So, and we're going to approve those at the end.
So we have our second draft ready for the board to approve.
That's it.
My strategic planning, I am the strategic planning committee at this point. As Rich and Karen both retired, although Karen has graciously decided to stay on as an advisor. So we'll have, we'll have her there, and she'll be great as a patron representative. All right, and we don't meet again until March.
Okay.
In a few minutes, we'll be looking for at least one volunteer to join the strategic planning committee. And like, this one meets quarterly, and we're, we're just like overseeing and managing the strategic plan that we approved in last year's process. At the, at the meeting we just recently had, we reviewed all of the tactics. Well, we kind of reviewed everything we had completed in year one, and we were impressed by how long the list was. And then we went over things that are slated for year two, which is twenty twenty-five. And we stood on those, and we rearranged a couple priorities, but for the most part, we're sticking to what the plan was last time you saw it. And let's see, April's going to be working towards making almost like a year-end report that we would see in a stockholders' report, where we have facts and statistics and stuff like that as part of it. And so because we're not quite done with twenty twenty-four yet, we'll get a final update of version of that at the next meeting.
Are you going to print that on the website?
Oh, yeah.
That'll be, oh, for sure.
It'll look more like the strategic plan pamphlet, so like a fold-out. So I'm hoping to put the audited, the twenty twenty-three audited budget potentially on the back. So whether you could see like a full thing of that, and then other accomplishments and things like that. So, and hopefully maybe something written by a board president, so, yeah.
All right, and then there is going to be a staff celebration for getting through the first year without any, you know, you know, nobody left, quits, but.
They were so excited. They, they've done a great job with their goals, so.
There's going to actually be a celebration on the twenty-seventh of January.
We picked a date.
Do you want any board representation in that?
I would love anyone that would like to attend and anyone that'd like to bring goodies or treats. It's, I believe it's a Monday.
It says twenty-seven.
I'll get you a time.
Okay. Yeah. Yes. I think we could do it. Becky or William, were either of you part of any of the breakouts or the interviews or anything? I don't remember you being on the steering committee, but I didn't know if you guys got tapped for any of that. We were. Eric, were you part of that?
No.
Okay. So, anyway, and then I already talked about looking for new committee members.
Thank you.
And then you'll find the updated version of the strategic plan in here. So if you have any questions, ask it.
There wasn't much to report in December, so most people are done. Most of the goals are done.
Which is really fantastic.
All right, so Policy Committee.
Yes, Policy Committee, we met December the third, mostly talked about the collection development policy, which we have a draft of that during review in new business outcomes. We also updated along with that, there are two forms that go along with that. One is the material suggestion form for new items that are going to be represented in your library, and one is a request for reconsideration, or people want us to reconsider a title.
These are for patrons to fill out.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, well, patrons to fill out for the material suggestion form, the request for reconsideration form is mainly for patrons, but any member of Michigan's citizenry can fill it out. So, because of the law, I guess we're open to anybody, anybody could actively, I mean, the library realizes. So we will look at that during the new business section, and then we're still with Consecrated Policy. I want to update it based upon House Bill six zero five seven, the Earn Sick Time Act. Who knows what that's going to be, now that they've had some workouts, all of that. You're going to be meeting with the attorney on January the seventh to look at the policy, but they'll probably tell us again, and show something changes with that bill or until the bill dies. We won't be updating that probably officially.
And is that, is that January seventh meeting at four or at five? I have it at five, and I just want to make sure that I'm right.
Take a one second.
Because I have it at five, but because I've been traveling back and forth between central time and eastern time, I'm not.
It's five.
Yeah.
Okay. It's, yeah, my calendar's a mess.
It's a great day, that's the same day as my work day, no review.
That's what we're meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll cover the collection development policy and two forms that we are submitting for approval during the section for new business. And our next meeting is that January seventh.
Alright, so.
If it, if you're tight. So, the acoustics for lab, the idea lab, excuse me, um, the painting of the matching stripe, a crucial part of this development is now complete. We're eagerly awaiting installation of the acoustic tiles and that should happen yet this month, correct? Yes.
Okay.
Really? Uh, yeah, they could, they'll, they'll, they'll be turned in, in fact, I would just was, I go ahead, I'll, I'll get you something, go ahead. After, um, building assessment sheet, after consulting with the library's builder, we've decided to investigate the need timeliness and costs of replacing our HVAC system. We will begin this process after the first of the year, so that'll be part of next years. Okay, let me update you real quick, so, uh, the sound panels are arriving, um, I'm assuming to image three sixty tomorrow, uh, and they're gonna open up the production, um, and get a set scheduled date.
Okay.
But that's the update on that.
If you're just in sake of the, of the two new members, can you tell them, like in two or three sentences, what we're doing with this tile?
Sure, um, in the idea lab, so we had on one, we have an acoustic problem, it's a little loud, I think when I gave, um, William the tour, I was telling him.
We knew that because we had to remove the acoustic package as part of a cost-cutting effort to offset some things that we had to pay for, that we hadn't planned on.
Yeah.
Due to some of the policies of the township board, and so we had to we did a number of things, we made the building two thousand feet smaller, we got rid of this acoustic package, we got rid of some furniture. There was a number of things we had to do to do that, and so it had always been in our long-term plan to do something to help with the, the noise in there. And so this is finally us being able to
Yeah.
To do that.
Um, so there was a stripe on one wall, so that we, after going through a whole process of determining what, what was gonna be best, um, we decided and the board decided that we'll match the stripe on the other wall and then we're gonna put acoustic sound panels on both sides to improve. Um, we'll start with that, if that does it well, then we can stop there and if not, um, we have the option to do the ceiling.
On the ceiling, something like that, too.
Correct, yeah. Donor tree update, we met with the consultant on November twentieth to obtain a sample of the leaves and make another round of edits to the verbiage. Based on feedback from the board, we also asked for a few changes to the shape of the leaves, as you all recall. Dedication plaque update, we completely changed the plaque's design. On November twentieth, again, we met with the consultants to make further updates, the final update should be all set. And the next step is to sign off and move to production.
Did we settle on that or on a tree yet? We did. I couldn't recall.
We have a renovation coming. We should probably bring that to the next meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We should bring it to the next meeting. Because I think just the people in the committee.
So is this, is this the final write-off?
That's the final, it's a triptych now, instead to cover that wall, is when you first come in the door.
Right.
There's a blank wall.
Right.
It's not deep enough to put, uh, lockers there, which for a long time that was the placeholder. So we're gonna put the dedication plaque up there.
Is this the same as the one you showed us last year, week or last month, I'm sorry?
It's similar to that.
Yeah, we just made a few tweaks. Yeah. I like to get a cover, just kind of something to put over it before we debut it. Before, rather than just slap it up on the wall, I'd like to do an unveiling.
I like that idea, so.
Okay, digital sign, we budgeted to replace, update this in November or in twenty twenty-five. Um, it's just in time as we had an issue with another square going out after, excuse me, paying electronic, uh, sorry, read that wrong, electromagnetic, the deposit, they were out to replace the square and we are good to go, as we talked about earlier. Their first comment that it would take a couple of months to get the square turned out to be wrong. The ultimate plan is to look into updating the system in the coming year for the budget, so. That's good news, after second visit, Goyet submitted their quote for the missing exhaust fan. Oh, sorry, HVAC issues. After a second visit, Goyet submitted their quote, quote for the missing exhaust fan, we are moving forward with getting this scheduled. We had another issue with one of our boiler, boilers, Goyet was out to fix it, April will share additional information on that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I didn't forget anything else.
No.
H V burden was out for their routine check on our chemical levels, all was good. Light replacement, we replaced the light just outside the two large study rooms. Additional counter space in idea lab, I received a quote from April, rather received a quote from library design for the additional counter space in the idea lab for twenty twenty-five. They provided two options, each to match what we currently have in the room. The only difference would be if we open it underneath or have covered. The ideal lab committee is in favor of covers. Because we have so much.
I, you know, what I just assumed that was, it was gonna include.
You have an option, because we have
Match the other side.
And the other side has both. It's cabinets on one and it's open on the other side.
We're, we're looking at just cabinets.
You can do either, that's what I'm, you know, talking to everybody to see what their what their thoughts are.
Yeah, we were just leaning toward covers.
Yeah.
So, moving on to new business. It's that time of year where we vote on officers for the twenty twenty-five
Can I interject, if you just ask a question?
Sure.
I'm very familiar with Robert's.
Yeah.
One is, I, I understand you guys probably done this for a long time with how you format your agendas. Why do you do new business before old business? That's just a question.
I, because that's how we've always done it, I don't know, I've been on the board almost twenty years and that's how we've always done it.
It's good. Um, and then the other part is, old business, old business doesn't exist in Robert's rules, it's called unfinished business.
Okay.
Because there's nothing old, it's just unfinished or we finished. So anyway, my two cents, please, you can go on, I just kinda was curious.
Unfinished business, so you would do it first, is that in Robert's rules, the order?
Well, you would do.
We all have that sheet, because Karen, who just left the board, she actually has taken.
You have a nice little handout, so.
Yeah, we have a book. I don't know if, if we'll even receive the book. So Karen last year took multiple classes from, um, Robert's rules and we all have a little cheat sheet, we probably should bring it with us. Um, or, you know, leave it in our, in our board packet.
I, and, and if I could just make one comment on that, too, um, that's fine however it's done, but it also has to be addressed in the bylaws, so if any changes in the future are going to be made, we have to look at the bylaws.
Does it, does the bylaws?
The bylaws have it as new business, then old business, but if you i- if any changes are gonna happen, which, and I was gonna say, we do need to go through the bylaws, um, in the coming year.
Okay, so.
Policy Committee is gonna.
So as of today, we're following our bylaws.
Yeah.
And as Jen said, we've just always done it this way.
Yeah, and I figured so.
Yeah. That's not always the best answer, but.
It isn't always best answer, like, you know.
Right. Meaning if you've done it like this.
Just like we all.
Everybody agrees, just gotta agree.
One of the things that we need to look at, you know, when we go through the bylaws too, is I always present the bills to be paid. The bills have already been paid. But I always present them at the end of the month and to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense, because the way, we, we used to write, everything was written once a month. Now it's done every week to keep up on things, okay? So it doesn't really make sense to present the bills for payment to be approved by the board when they've already been paid throughout the month. So that is something else that we don't need to update.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're on to, um, We're just starting on board officers to have a vote. And I'll just kick it off and I'll say, I'm more than happy to serve as president again this year. But I will not be offended if there's somebody else that wants to do it. And I would like to nominate Eric to be vice president. If he's so willing to do that. Cause you've had, you've had a year as being a trustee and and we've appreciated everything you've done on your, on the committee and all that, so if you're okay with that, I'd like to submit his name for that. Alright, so we have to fill secretary, which Carrie so graciously filled in on.
Well, I've been doing it since September, so I figured, why waste all of that training?
So are you okay with, with that?
Yes, please.
And then Gwen, if you would continue as treasurer?
Yes.
Okay, and then you guys are both new, so this will give you a year of experience and you can keep an eye out or anything that looks good for next year.
Right.
Okay? Alright, so normally we have a vote at this point. So. Who wants? First of all, I'm, I'm nominating Jen Schultz for president.
Do we have to have seconds to nomination?
No, no, we just like keep a slate and we just write position and name and we just have a.
Okay.
So if there's no other nominations and the four of us were all okay with what was nominated, then I would just need a vote of the members for President Jennifer Schultz. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So you got, so, oh, I have a lot of those, but. And then everybody who is in favor of Eric being our vice president for the year. You can. Alright, and then if everybody in favor of Gwen being our treasurer for another year?
I, I.
Okay. And finally Carrie being our secretary for another year.
I, I.
Alright.
Okay. You can, you can go on yourself. Alright, so we'll just approve the, the slate as presented.
Okay.
All done.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Cause it's very odd that a board has.
Well, the president can't vote, so that's, there's five votes.
Where in the bylaws is that, you know?
I don't.
Yeah, it, it's in our bylaws, that we have six members on the board.
No, I know, oh, I, I understand that, but I did not read this. But there's never a tie.
Um, but.
Unless one's not here, and then who votes? So we only need four to be a quorum.
We only need four to be a quorum.
Right, so, and so there's four of us here and, uh, okay, you can't get a, can't get a.
See, where's Rich when you need him?
Very Robert's rules, the president votes in the case of a tie.
Right.
Or chooses not to vote if there is, if it's a close vote and you don't want it to pass.
Okay.
So if there's five present.
Yeah.
There's five present, then it was a two-two, you would have to vote.
Okay.
So you only vote.
I'm only voting if I have to break the tie.
Right.
Like the vice president.
That's what the bylaws say right here.
I'm sure it is.
Section three point zero one.
Cause I think we've actually been through this since I've been on the board.
We've never had that many.
And, and Rich was our president.
Yeah.
And he, and he, he had a tiebreaker.
He did. I don't recall that, but that's good. I've had a few strokes, so. Okay. Um, so we were there, so now that we've established the board, the next on the agenda is our committee assignments. And is everybody who's on a committee wanna stay on their committee? Is there anybody that needs to lighten their load or anything like that?
I'm good with my assignments.
Okay, so one, one representative from each committee just can give a pitch about what we're doing and what we're looking for. We can never have four board members on the committee.
Right.
Okay, it can be three, but, so you're still not a quorum, but if it was four, then it would be considered.
We're also not voting.
And alright, yeah. But anyway, anytime there's a quorum of people, it's considered.
Right.
To my understanding. Okay, so I'll just start with the strategic planning committee. And that, like again, what we do is we just manage where we are on the list of uh, strategies that we had, we have goals and we have strategies to get to those goals. And, um, we meet four times quarterly and, um, we're just watching that contract for that. I suppose if there was any business or any budget or whatever that had to be released between meetings, you know, we, one of the committee members will bring it to the board, but typically that's what we're doing. And so it's me and Karen, so we have two people on the committee. I'd like to have another board member if, if you can put it in your, put it in your schedule. So is there anybody who would like to volunteer for the committee?
Strategic.
Okay.
I would.
Okay. Then would, you can put William on there so that, that gives us at least three members. Okay, and there's no voting or anything on that, we're just looking for people to fill some wild spots. Alright, and then finance committee?
Okay, so finance committee, we actually basically, we go through, we meet once a month and, um, we review the budget. Um, and see where we're at with budget and what, um, you know, some of our bigger expenditures and we, um, talk about some, usually about staffing budget, we usually get really, really busy in the middle of the summer to talk about the following year's budget. And April's doing a really great, you know, the upcoming budget, April's doing a really great job on keeping up with the budget all the time, so. We really go through the budget well and this year we did, uh, it was wonderful that we had one budget meeting and actually approved it. You know, and.
That was because of all of April's.
It was because of all of April's.
On the finance committee, too.
And, well, we, and we asked a lot of questions in the finance committee and then we talk about, um, and currently the people that are signers for the, um, for all of our accounts are on the finance committee, so then you know, we talk about what we're doing, you know, um, with banking and what we need to do for CDs and we usually just, you know, I usually present what we need to do as a treasurer for upcoming CDs and we discuss that and we can, it gives us an opportunity to talk about it in detail about where, um, you know, what we're gonna keep in CDs versus what we, you know, need for spending and that's about it, really, it's, it's about how we're investing and, and how we're spending the money. Um, but it's all already budgeted out, we just need to make sure that we're up to date with that. And, um, I would actually like Becky to be on the, um, finance committee this year because I would really like to train Becky as a, um, as a, um, potential future treasurer.
And you have background in.
Yes, yes.
So I'm, that gives us four people, so I'm willing to, to step down from that committee and get my C D updates at the meetings. So, then we'll have to, we'll have to figure out signing.
No, I want, you need, no, you're gonna stay a signer because you're president.
Okay.
But, but the people on the, um, on the finance committee don't need to be signers.
Okay.
And the treasurer really needs to be on the finance committee and, and April, you know, obviously is there. But, um, I'd like to be, um, have Becky in training and I'd like to be able to sit down, um, with Becky and show her what I'm doing as a treasurer. But you're.
Not it, so.
But you, but you're still, um, you know, you're still a signer, right? And as, as a president, you really need to be a signer.
Okay. I'm good for that, so.
And then I, I will also remain a.
You're, you're gonna continue to be a signer as well, we don't want, we just changed everything when, in October, right? We don't really wanna go through that again, it's quite the process to go to all the banks and we've just added a bank, so.
Yeah. I really didn't want to do it again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So the three members of the finance committee are?
Are, um, Becky Knapp, Carrie Francis.
Carrie.
Yep, and, um, Gwendolyn Newton.
So I'm just going by the listed committee reports, Eric.
Thank you, Becky.
You guys are both on policy committee.
You're correct.
Yeah, so, so the policy committee basically meets to discuss pieces of policy and evaluate them, wordsmith them, adjust them as necessary and.
So we don't spend all meetings doing that.
Correct.
Done that before.
We usually do things that we send it to the attorney for, when necessary, uh, for review before we bring it to the board.
Actually, almost everything goes to the attorney, doesn't it?
Almost always, unless it's just something that's more of a simpler policy or there's like a boilerplate from say another library that we know has had theirs approved by an attorney. Um, sometimes you do that. Right, yeah.
Essentially, that's what the policy committee does and we meet monthly.
And then just, uh, for our new members, these are all Zoom meetings, or ninety-five percent of them are, uh, by Zoom, so.
Right, usually a- after hours, right?
Usually.
Yeah, the finance committee usually meets at four, but we, but we're open to, to changing that if it doesn't work for you. Um, and then the policy committee meets at five.
And I, for one, love the policy committee, so I'd like to remain out.
I don't think anybody's gonna fight you on. Did, did Becky or William, do either of you have an interest in doing that?
No.
When you've got enough people to function, you've got April and do you step on that committee too?
No. But they look at things before we do.
Depends, yeah, it depends. Depends on what it is.
Uh, uh, I, I'm used to it, Aviana.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of.
It is because it's a lot, and that's why you see, and we've gotten a lot done amazingly. But it.
No, sometimes it feels like wading through mud.
Yeah, but when you look at the list of what we still have yet to do.
But if you don't have time to really, really read and start going out and Eric's great about looking at different things and like, you know, I started researching like the investment policies, right? Um, it, it is, it's probably, I feel like it's the most time-consuming besides CDs for the, as a treasure, yeah.
It, it is when we get things done, but you know, we spend a lot of time going back and forth with a lawyer.
I, I'm fine with the three of us.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so do, I have a quick question for the.
Um so do I quick question for the minutes, do they list you as part of that committee as the three?
No.
No, I didn't.
April gets to be on all the. So Karen was actually really, really great on that committee. I I'm sort of afraid to ask if she would be a advisor again. She is really excellent on.
She was, she was very good at them.
Well, I guess feel free, you don't have to be a word to be on.
Right, she can always say no, but she. She had really, really, really good comments.
I just, my wife, but she overruled everything I said.
Alright, so that's. The last committee I've got on my list is the Building Committee. Am I missing anybody? Is that it? We have four members, April?
Okay.
Yeah.
It is the fiftieth anniversary thing, that's more of an ad hoc.
Right.
Committee, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're. So the Building Committee is me.
And me, and then Amy will be joining.
Okay. That's a good condition. Yes, sir.
So is there room on that?
Uh, we'll take any of it.
Because I actually in my wheelhouse.
That's good, that's that we're looking for, we've been talking about, is there a contractor or an architect or somebody who would wanna get in? That would have more history with what to be ready for in building, like to me, five years for your HVAC seems soon.
Yes, I'm very concerned.
But we've had nothing but problems with our HVAC since everyone moves in, so someone who like knows anything about it would be helpful.
If you would like to add me.
We'd be happy to do that.
It's a.
Monday.
Mm-hmm.
Four o'clock?
Yeah, I think what we were.
If it has to be later or earlier.
It's it's a five, but it's um.
It's a five.
Yeah, but I think we're going to be creating a new time, so what I'll do is I can send out a doodle poll.
Okay.
To the three of you and we'll kind of restart the system.
Alright. So what, look for some kind of text from April on that and we'll find the time that works and we're happy to have you do that expertise there. Same with you, Becky, on the Finance Committee. That's great.
Um going back to the strategic planning, is there room for another board member on that?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to be on that one as well.
Cause you only have two board members on there, right?
Yeah, we're in Eric.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, so it's me, Carrie and William are the three board members. Okay, and who's on the strategic plan, you?
William, John and Becky.
Okay.
Yeah, Becky's down, so that's the three here.
Can can you clarify something? Cause I'm kind of confused.
Sure.
Um so I didn't catch it in the bylaws, so I assume it's it's not there. It's there, I missed it, but why can you hang it? Why is there a limit of?
You can't have.
Because of the quorum.
Right, because if you have four of us together and there's any kind of um decisions, well, first of all. We really shouldn't be together and talking about um library business without it being an official meeting, right? These are just committees. So we can't have four people on it because that's technically it would be a board meeting and those board meetings then need to be publicized and they need to be. They're they're subject to Open Meetings Act, so you know, we would have to have Amy there, she's gonna have to be recording it. Um these, and we don't make decision, we make decisions that are recommendations to the board. So it we used to do, we just started committees, right? Yeah, we used to do all of it at the board meetings and we would be here for hours.
Oh, for sure.
So that's why we decided, that's why we decided, truly.
I know how.
So when I first started on the board a few years ago, we were here for hours. So then we started doing these committee, these committees when April came. And it's really helpful because then we weighed through what we're gonna do with the CD, right? We weigh through what's gonna be, what's, what are they looking at for strategic commit, the strategic plan? What are we gonna do for building instead of us all sitting here trying to hash out?
So help me with, and I just wanted, cause I'm like one of those dot the i cross the things, so I need to figure out. Why it can't be done, so where's it written? Is it, it's not written in our bylaws, so it's gotta be written in a um policy.
But you can't.
It's Michigan Open. Reference that, but.
Because I said on other boards that have large committees and there are multiple people, but we could never make a forum, and I understand because it's so small.
Right.
Quorum could be made, but I've just never seen the. And it's okay, I mean, I want to understand.
It's mine, like I said, it's understanding that, like, we couldn't even just go to coffee.
No.
You know. The library and passing the.
So we can meet like accidentally.
Yeah, so so we don't do anything via email either. You know, we don't send, somebody somebody doesn't say not send something out and say, hey, I'm, you know. I think we're gonna have this coming up on the on the meeting and so I want everybody to think about it and you know, I'm gonna vote that and I'm gonna vote, we can't say that in in an email.
I'll I'll wait through it as we go.
Okay.
So it'll pan itself off.
So you won't see like um group texts. That has any kind of comment that would influence a vote. We don't get together as, you know, more than three of us, you know, so. Can discuss.
So but are are aren't these board meetings have defined dates?
We have to find dates.
We have to have.
So unless unless you.
Uh-huh.
Or a majority of this board. Would call for a special meeting.
We do.
Those meetings happen on those days only.
Right.
So it I guess you're probably just looking for to avoid a conflict.
Absolutely.
But that's really all it is.
And we always have a special meeting now for our budget. So and then the other one, special meetings we've ever had is.
Special meetings to approve something that. The business occurred after the meeting, but we needed an answer before.
For the next meeting.
We've had occasional.
And we've had special meetings to um have a new board member.
Yeah, they all have to be posted.
Yes.
April has to post them.
Do we have to post them?
Yeah, what's your day notice? What's the legal day notice?
The tour, any special.
Especially.
It's I, it can come down to, I think, a matter of like hours. It's like eighteen, I think it's eighteen hours. If you're doing an emergency.
Yeah.
We haven't had one, it's, that's fine. But usually we.
I was just curious.
Hey, April?
Yes.
I was just thinking, can you get a copy of the strategic plan report? For Becky and for William, since they weren't on any of the interview committees or or groups or anything?
Are you talking about the pamphlet itself?
Not the pamphlet.
The bigger.
The bigger.
The big giant, there's just the main one that has all of them.
Yeah, well, and the pamphlet too.
Mm-hmm.
But it's it's what the document's based on, so just give us some history. So that's all the committees. Does anybody have the foresight and knowledge to envision a new committee that would be needed? So this time we're not gonna create any more committees, we're gonna keep the ones that we have. And we're having some new members. Kind of sums it up. Okay, next is the Friends Wish List. The Friends raise money for the library.
Phenomenal job.
Yeah.
Fantastic group of people.
Did we ever follow through with the five oh three C standards?
For for us?
For, well, for the. Friends.
What do you mean? We're looking at doing it, um setting up for us.
Mm-hmm.
More of an endowment, but I have not finished that research yet. But I don't know, the the Friends are.
They're already?
Yeah.
Can you repeat your question, John? I didn't hear.
I. Maybe it's the libraries that I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
The Friends are already five oh three. Okay, so it's making us an official.
What's the term that I'm looking for? Um April. My mind is blank, a foundation.
Yeah.
We're looking to set up a foundation, so people can donate to a foundation.
Got it.
And it's different, it's different from the Friends.
Okay.
Um and um there's several other libraries in the community that have foundations and we don't have one. So for example, um say you have a trust, right? Um instead of giving money to just, and you trust just saying you're gonna give money to the library, you can give you give money to the foundation.
Okay. That's not covered under Finance Committee, so we're doing it separately.
I just need, I have a lot of investigation to do in the whole presentation that I need to make and there's a lot of formal documentation. If we if we approve it as a board, there's a lot of documentation and legal documentation is gonna be. And I just haven't gotten that.
Should we, should it be shepherded or covered under the? I think, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just keep it there.
Yeah. And we'll go quickly.
Yeah, I hope to get it done this year.
Not to not to interrupt until we, but I found the art, the art of the Open Meetings Act in the committees. It's in the Open Leads Act Handbook um from the Michigan Attorney General. Page eight talks about any forum, the board gathering outside of violating the OMA and Advisory Committees in the OMA. And it does follow along with what we, our practice has been. Be happy to.
Thank you.
Share the page, but yeah.
Thanks, Lloyd.
I believe I did put the OMA, that Open Meeting Act in both of your binders. It should look like that.
So could you repeat that, Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah. Page eight, the Open Meetings Act Handbook in Michigan uh Attorney General Department.
I'm I'm not seeing it. I have the Finance.
Yeah.
And then I have them. Um Michigan Public Library.
I'll get you each copies.
Okay, thank you.
It talks about, page eight talks about the form of the board gathering outside of the meeting about violating the OMA. Social gatherings, chance gatherings, as long as we don't deliberate for any kind of a decision. Um what constitutes a quorum, what constitutes an advisory committee? And whether an advisory committee is subject to the Open Meetings Act or not, we try to remain off that radar, so.
Right.
By keeping that the rules of the advisory committee, so as long as we don't have forums. We do not, and the OMA does not apply to us.
So as long as we only have three maximum board members on any committee, we're never gonna have a problem.
Right. Okay. And as long as we don't meet as a group of four.
So it's a special, it means it's a federal statute.
At least in Michigan.
I don't know if it's federal.
Okay. So the next on our list of new business is the Friends Wish List. Everybody should have that from your packet.
If I can just give you a few, uh just a few, uh one quick change on this one. Uh the portable stage that the Friends requested, we are, we have decided that um. Uh the exec board, after reviewing it, we're not going to actually purchase those, we're just going to rent because we don't need them. And storing them would be difficult, so that obviously money will be set aside to rent them, but it's certainly not gonna be two thousand dollars. So whatever amount it will become uh would just go down to the new ideas slash fiftieth anniversary. Um area.
I I'm very happy to hear that, see that there's toy storage.
Yes, yes.
Just somebody that works back there.
Um it's hard, like even the kids, like putting the toys away, oh, cause it doesn't fit right.
Right, I'm really happy to see that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so um let me just give you a few things. So professional podium, as you can see right now, what we have for a podium is right over there. Um and I just would like to see something with um a little more professional, uh so then it has our nice logo on the front. Um so we'll be looking at something like that. Um, we got three garbage cans, one for each patio last year. Um we should have. Bought another one for over by the two tables that are near the staff entrance. Uh we find a lot of patrons actually sitting there. Um I, okay. So we need, we need a garbage can over there. I don't expect people to walk over to the large. Huge garbage entrance and open it up and just, no. Uh the Friends did request two additional uh microphones with stands. I know that looks very expensive, but the way our system is, they have to be. You have to special order and they have to be, they have to come in and tune to a certain frequency to match our system. Uh and we also have a problem right now that um. They they're not, they're all tuned to one, so they need to be tuned to two separate, so if you had the wall up. And because originally the wall was not here, so when they put in the system, now that we do have a wall, you could have. Potentially a program, a rental, two rentals, each needing microphones, and we couldn't do that. So now we have to get them to come in and fix that. Um so that's the deal, why the microphones are a little pricey. Um yep, the toy storage, um the additional counter space in the idea lab, and just to let you know, cause I know something came up during the budget that was asking. Um, you know, what part of the budget is the Friends Wish List going for? And I'm happy to say that with this wish list, a majority of this is capital is um, excuse me. Yes, it is capital outlay, but it specifically um would be replacing fund balance, so while this year we're not using any fund balance. Um this wishlist addresses what we may have had to use for fund balance, so that's.
Which is really generous.
A very good thing.
Question on the counter space, now does that include the cabinets that work?
Okay, yes, it does. Um and and just you, and that's.
April, was that number right, or is, I know it's the decimals, I'm losing it, it's a fourteen hundred dollars?
Fourteen thousand, yeah, it's just needed the two decimal points over, yeah, fourteen thousand. Um that is from a company that is usually on the higher side. Um I am looking into a second quote, obviously I would bring, all this was gonna come to, will come to the board. Um, anything that's over five thousand will come to the board for approval. For quotes and approval. Additional board book, then, we are running out of space for board books. Um an RFID reader, those little disc readers that help us to scan books quickly is needed in tech services. We need um some commercial grade coffee maker, the one we have um. When I did the volunteer appreciation last year, those of you that were there for that, um the coffee maker still wasn't heated up an hour later. Uh, this is one of those harsh commercial grade ones, it's just, it's just not working right, um so we we need to upgrade that. Two handy movers, um are the, we just don't have enough of these flatbeds and the ones we have are just.
Mm-hmm.
Clumsy and not, not good. I guess I could give my my home improvement grunt, but I'd like something with a little bit bigger wheels.
The changing tables, where are they going?
In one in men's, one in women's, cause we have one in family, so. And when I told my son that, he was very happy. With a new baby, it's, he's like, mom, there should be one in the men's too. Um staff logo wear upgrade, um so we have not had a logo wear upgrade, um I don't know when. I I, it's way before my time, so I think it's time I'd like to offer staff a range. So this is based on a certain high amount for a certain amount of wear, you could say a T-shirt, a polo, a. A a zip up um of a cardigan, but we would give them the option and so they'd have a certain amount. Um and they could choose their logo wear. Uh that is also included for a board.
I was gonna just say, yeah, we go out.
Because when you go out and and uh look at things, um and so sellable swag and spirit wear, so. Uh if we want to sell swag or spirit wear, it has to be done through the Friends. A theater workshop for sixth through twelfth graders, um this is a six week uh class. So that's why.
Very nice.
And obviously, new ideas is just, uh as an example, new ideas last year, we were able to get those yard signs. So while it wasn't thought of perhaps at this moment, um it it can come later. And then annually, these are the same things that would they annually help us with the book page subscription, cafe supplies, concert series, movie license, summer reading. That volunteer recognition event, um and our staff in.
Thank you.
Good.
It looks very good.
They're very generous.
Yeah.
Uh then what's left on the agenda tonight are two different policy reviews. They're both in our packet.
Do you, are you, is everyone approving the?
Wish list?
Oh, yes, I make a motion to approve the um Friends of the Library, Whitley Township Library, um wishlist for twenty twenty five.
I'll support for discussion.
For discussion?
Yeah, I support their discussion. Meaning I'm gonna discuss it.
That's what I figured you were saying.
Let's go.
So.
Thank you.
I raised the motion.
One second.
Can somebody just explain to me how this friends works?
So, yes, um do you wanna do it or do you want me to?
They are organization independent of the library.
So five oh what?
Five oh one, secret.
Secret, yeah.
And they have programs, they sponsor the um book sales. Um, anything else? And stuff like that, they, we have programs in the library that we typically don't charge for. They have programs also that they do charge for, like they had a murder mystery dinner kind of thing. They've had some other stuff like that, like I said, they used to do putt putt golf every year and that would bring in almost ten thousand dollars, so.
So they raised money on behalf of.
The library.
For the library.
Then they gift it back to us.
Okay, and so I guess then my question is, is this, is we're giving it back to them?
No, this is what they've raised in their monies that they're giving to us.
Okay, that's what I'm scared.
And that's what it's for, they don't just give us twenty thousand dollars.
Right. Right.
They give us twenty thousand dollars to be used in X, Y, and Z. This is what the wishlist is for this year. You know, they're planning on raising forty-five thousand, maybe they'll raise more, maybe they won't.
Right, but this is what they'll give us this year.
This is what they're looking.
So, two years ago, they gave us thirty thousand dollars, last year they gave us forty thousand dollars, this year they're committing to giving us forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Now, so if they come under that, how does it decipher where it goes?
Well, I think we as a board would have to figure that out, but that hasn't happened.
Yeah, that hasn't happened.
Would it be irrelevant? This is a goal, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. They, and they, and they, they're making that commitment to give us forty-five thousand dollars, and I think that they actually know how they're, you know, they're probably well on their way. And so they do a quarterly book sale, but they also make an awful lot of money, um, on selling, uh, they sell through Amazon and eBay. So people donate books here all the time, and they, like Karen says, I like to sort books. We, um, have given them their own room, and they have, they, um, have internet access, and we have storage here, and so.
They've got a scanner, you know, they, they scan it, check it to Amazon, see what it's with on Amazon, and they may sell it there.
Right. During COVID, they, um, they started doing that during COVID and realized that they could make a tremendous amount of money by selling, um. So it's been really, really beneficial for us to have the Friends. And our Friends, um, our Friends committee and, um, members, they actually, it's sort of unbelievable how much they donate compared to, um, other libraries in the area. They're, they're really, they're unbelievable how much dedication they have and what they bring in for us.
Yeah, I've worked, I've worked with literally thousands of libraries, and for the size of our library, we get a huge amount of money compared to other libraries. Most libraries are sized, and most of them are enhanced Friends group, and those that do raise a couple thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, our Friends group is just, they're just phenomenal.
So you can understand that, when I see the draft Friends wishlist, to me it was, I mean, I, I actually had it completely wrong, what I thought they were asking.
No, this is what they're giving us.
Okay, and that's great, I appreciate it, thank you.
And they're very dedicated to the library, and they're phenomenal, and they, they run their book sales right here in this room.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, let's see, you wanna go first on collection policy?
Yeah, we didn't vote. We didn't, we, I made a motion, yeah, and.
We never got a vote.
Oh, I only have one, I only have your names here, sorry. So all in favor of the wishlist as presented today?
I.
Okay, five yes votes? Thank you for keeping me on track here. So, you wanted the collection development policy first?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about the collection development policy, then.
Then the two forms are.
Included in this packet includes the request for reconsideration, which is, you know, last, at least in my packet, it's the last.
Yeah.
And then prior to that is the material suggestion form.
Yeah.
So I don't know if anybody's had a chance to review it yet.
I hope so.
I hope so as well, it's likely.
Is there anything different from the last time I saw? Is it highlighted? Um, I don't see any differences from the last one.
We, yeah, we didn't highlight it, but, well, the material suggestion form and the request for reconsideration are a little, you know, are new. Um, and, um, one, and we had a clarification from Claire DeLoyer. Yeah, from Michigan Library Association, right?
Right, so this is really the first view of this one, um, just to give you a little bit heads up. The attorney, uh, went through this for us, um, added the, you'll notice on the fourth paragraph, added the definitions for us. Uh, that is one thing. She cleaned up, took a few things out that were not supposed to be in there, edited. Uh, certainly the scope of the policy of the manual, you'll see that statement is in there. A lot was fine as to what we had before, but, um.
Moved a couple of references to District Library.
Yep.
Where it said that in there, which we are not.
Um, it does, uh, give a lot of respect to, uh, individual parents' rights, uh, to supervise what, what their, what their children read, and that's, that's the goal. We are not in local apprentice, um, and it is the parent's job to take care of that. Uh, so it makes it clear. It, it, the second thing that's most important about it, that's different from what we had before, is it gives time. It takes time, it takes to, to take care of, um, material processing, request for reconsideration, either of those, it takes time. But especially for requests, because you have to go through a process, you have to form a committee. Um, you have to look at the book, you wanna get serious to consideration to what, um, the patron is talking to you about. Uh, and so it gives us time to do that, especially if, you know, they have more than one title that they are concerned about. And so it gives us that ability to respond to them, um, in a thoughtful manner, and, and getting all of our, uh, information together. So it takes care of that.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
This, this isn't numbered on pages, but, um, when it, when it says request for reconsideration of the library solely.
Yes.
They're writing a letter to you, but they're also writing a letter to me. They write to me in a desert of a, you know?
Correct.
Your answer?
Correct.
Is that what that's saying?
Correct, so they, they start with, yep.
She start with you.
Mm-hmm.
They don't like your answer.
Right.
They write to me.
That's correct. And then that's technically taking it to the board.
Okay, it's not just me, it's me for the, and representation of the board.
Correct.
Okay.
And is that represented by the request for reconsideration, that's secondarily?
Mm-hmm. Um, what Glenn was referring to is that, uh, in reviewing other library requests for reconsideration, uh, and talking to other directors, there's a little bit of some libraries are trying to restrict it to their own communities. Um, however, uh, in talking to our attorney through the Library of Michigan, that is not a good idea to do. There's, there's reasons for that, and I'm not gonna go ahead and read you the whole thing, I can share it with you at, uh, you know, via email. Uh, but basically, it would open us up to potential litigation, uh, so at this time, we're just.
Rather not do that.
Yeah, we would rather not do that.
Yeah, and so we don't have the word patron in here for, you know, um, well, actually, it says, it does say the patron will inform in writing, on the receipt, over the place.
Well, I, I believe that's a general term, too.
Okay.
Um, okay, usually anyone that frequents a library is, they're paid, they're, they're a patron of that library. Uh, so it's more of a general term.
Right, we, we define the difference between patron and cardholder.
That's true, we do, yeah, I'm sorry, we do, yeah. So, um, and it was clarified to us that it's not, a patron isn't just, as Eric says, a cardholder, it's anybody in the state of Michigan.
Right, and it's anybody's welcome to come in.
Yeah. Which, I actually didn't know until we went through this process, that as a citizen in the state of Michigan, you can actually walk in and use library services at any library. It does not have to be your own library.
Yeah, I do that when we're on vacation.
Yeah, all the time.
I've done it before in the past, and I'm told, you know, and not, not our library, but I have gone into a library in the past, and they said, um, you don't have a card here, you can't check it.
Let's give them a visitor's pass.
Yeah, and you really should, and then listening to what Claire said, I thought, geez.
That's pretty interesting.
Yes.
Okay. So do we need to approve anything today?
Well, I hope so, because, you know, we've had the lawyers look at this multiple times, and, um, you know, we've, um, April put it out in our board packet, you know, earlier in last week, and we'd really like to get it approved. We've been working on it for months.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, can somebody just give me a quick overview of purposes?
Um, every library has to have a collection policy, um, and if you, and, um.
You define collection?
Um, okay, it's everything, it's everything we have.
Okay.
Blu-ray, DVD book, ebook, audiobook, magazine, um.
It's checked out.
Anything that can, you know.
Either can be.
Basically, that's checked out.
Checked out and or used inside, so.
So databases are part of the collection?
Yeah, yeah, so every library has to have a collection policy, and, um, you know, people are gonna wanna read it and see what it pertains to and, and how, how we do our collection. Also, if we want to do any grant, um, applications, they're always gonna make sure that we have an investment policy, a collection policy. I'm trying to think what other policy that you guys need, April, um, Amy, when you're doing grants. There's, there was four or five things I remember them wanting the last time you guys did a grant. So, and, and, so what we're doing right now is, is all the different policies hadn't really been reviewed in years, and we're going through policy by policy.
Okay.
And making sure they're updated. Many that we found last year with, working with the lawyers, um, so we have, we have the lawyers reviewing things bef, um, before, and like, well, it's like the collection policy. April said, we're updating our collection policy, we sent them our policy, they sent us back. This is the template that we should be using as a library in the state of Michigan, and these are the things that need to be included by law in that, in that policy. And all the different policies that we have.
I appreciate that, because we all, we refer to your guys' experience and, uh, time.
Well.
This, and not my own.
We actually thought, instead of spending hours and hours and hours trying to work through these, we are, we're looking at the templates that, the, um, there's a set of, um, lawyer, of attorneys, that all they do is library law. And so they have templates for all of these policies, and we are working closely with those to make sure that we don't have to. It, it saves us from trying to recreate the wheel every single policy.
Thank you for the quick education.
Okay.
Yeah, plus with all.
I'm, I'm a quick study.
With all, with all the libraries also in the state of Michigan, too, that a lot of them have already done the work. So it's a matter of taking sort of what they've done and evaluating whether or not it fits the legal guidelines, matches up with what our policies have, and if not, finding some common ground. Right, so it's, with, with as many libraries as there are, most of them have, particularly the bigger ones have some of these things pretty well laid out. Whether or not they're correct or not, that's what we have to evaluate.
Right.
When we adopt any of those pieces.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Yeah, I have a motion to approve the collection development policy.
I will second it, yeah.
I'll favor.
Do we need to, just like Karen, so do we need to also approve the forms or do those separate?
I think they're part of policy, they're referenced in the policy.
Okay, so let, let me amend.
They are referenced, they're part of the policy, yeah.
Okay, so let, let me amend my motion then, so I, I make a motion to approve the collection development policy, including the request for reconsideration form and the material suggestion form. As for.
And your spoken section?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Five yes votes.
Right.
I feel good, you got it done. It was a big one.
It's a lynch pendler.
Now, policy, you, you guys do a great job.
When you give the sixty policy, John, we'll bring another guy.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
We're gonna party then.
Yeah, we're gonna have a celebration.
Okay, and the last one, uh, is the investment policy. We've talked a lot about that tonight, too.
Uh, yes, so I'll quit looking at things like this. Okay, so, um, we had an investment policy for years, and it was pretty antiquated. So, um, we actually looked, I think, at five different libraries' investment policies, if I have that right, April. And, um, some of them were very, very simple, and some of them were convoluted, and some of them talked about things that, you know, we're not big enough for. So we actually came up with, uh, we pretty much modeled Lake Orion's investment policy. Um, and they, and most of it, you know, attributes to the different laws that were required to follow, and you can see that they're, they're document, those laws are documented in the bottom of this investment policy. Um, the one thing that I decided to do that we, that none of those had in them, is I went out and looked at Oakland County's, um, investment policy, and they had a couple of things in there that I thought were, um, important for us to put into ours, um, about investment pools and mutual funds. There's a list of questions. I, when I first became treasurer, I was asked to, um, look at an investment pool. And, um, I had all these questions about it, and I didn't have anybody to really help me. And then when I went out to, in one of the investment pools I was looking at, was the small, uh, government investment pool through the county. And even the county person that does that investment pool wasn't really, really helpful. So, um, one of the things I really liked, though, that I found at the county, was they had a list of questions that I can use when, if we look at moving from, um, CDs, which are, you know, safe and easy, um, and going into investment pools or mutual funds. Um, we included the standard list of questions that should be asked. Um, and, and actually, not just asked, but, um, written responses from, from a, an investment fund, okay? And so, um, because like when I was working with the county, they gave me a little pamphlet that told me nothing, and I thought, okay, this isn't, this isn't gonna work. So anyways, I think this is important for anybody, any treasurer, um, for the library, to go through this with an investment fund or an investment pool manager to, um, give us, um, answer these questions, okay? The other thing is, is we didn't have in our investment policy before to anything about standards of care, we didn't have proofs. Um, so that's on the last page, and we didn't have ethic, ethics and conflicts of interest listed, and so I added those as well. That, they're just verbatim right from, pretty much, um, from them. Okay, so it just, um, you know, it's, so like the ethics, this is a library for treasurer and forward authorized signers involved in the investment process to refrain from personal business activity that could conflict with the proper execution and management of the investment program. We didn't have any of that before. So. And, and, and the, and the part of this is, pretty much, we're just following the Michigan Uniform Budgeting and Counting Act.
You wanna make a motion?
So, um, if, um, any other discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the investment policy as presented.
I'm second.
I will second.
Good. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Five yes votes. That's it.
I'll respect that, it has the primordial, it's, it's safety.
Oh, this is, this is standard for all Michigan libraries, yeah.
I love that.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, yeah, it, it's, it's pretty.
That's pretty close to having done what the auditor wanted us to have done, too.
Yeah. And, yes. We are doing what the auditor asked us to do, right?
Yeah.
And, um, we've seen a couple grant applications that said, you know, do you have an investment policy?
Okay.
So with the understanding that you can't leave till your picture's taken up, would someone like to make a, a motion to adjourn? Becky or William, would one of you lead the motion?
I'll second, or to make the motion?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, I move to adjourn immediately.
Then at eight twelve?
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, present age.
We already have a picture.
They're getting updated pictures, because we have two new members, and we wanted new pictures for the website for.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I texted, I texted, and you said, yeah.
I did?
Yes.
Well, I think it's a thing.
Are we off? I'm, I'm, I apologize, my step. And I really have been.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Give you a second.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, I did.
Sorry.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, shoot, no.
So have a great rest of twenty twenty-four.